All right, good evening, welcome to the March 12th, 2013 meeting of the Manchester Town Council. 7:00 PM tonight, we did have a closed session to discuss personnel pursuant to state government article, section 10-508A, appointment, employment, assignment promotion, discipline promotion, compensation, so on and so forth of town positions. Sorry for getting started a few minutes late, we did kind of push up against that 30-minute time limit we set for a hard stop and then to allow everybody to get in and get settled, took a couple of minutes. First order of the business is the approval of January 8th, 2013 minutes and the February 12th minutes. You should have copies of both of those in your packets. Again, the January minutes were not completed and ready for review and approval at the February meeting, so we're doing both of those now. We can handle them separately or together, however you guys choose to proceed. Probably clean and do separate, but whatever you want.
I'll make a motion that we accept the January 8th, 2013 minutes.
I second that.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, February?
I make a motion that we accept the February 12th, 2013 minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so now we have receipt of February 2013 treasurer's report. This is also in your packet. We did handle January's treasurer's report at the February meeting.
I'll make a motion that we receive the February treasurer's report.
I second that.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor's report, just a couple of quick items. Quick update on the police chief search, which is ongoing. The official report, we have done some work, and we're working with Hampstead on some background information to vet out possible candidate. We have received that back and we're obviously not going to appoint tonight, so there will be no official appointment vote or anything like that this evening on a police chief, but we are, that is ongoing, and we hope to have, be moving that process forward in the near future. Hopefully next month or so. Board of Elections, we do have an election coming up in May, and this afternoon, I guess now, just a little while ago, I swore in Mary Ann Wareheim to election board's member, and we have two other individuals, Nancy Herman and Belva Lamott. If you'd be willing to come up to the microphone and we could swear your ladies in.
Yes.
Say your name when I do it again, and if I say aye, take your name.
Belva Lamott.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and I will be faithful in virtue of the state of Maryland, support the constitutional laws thereof, and I will do the best of my skill and judgment diligently and faithfully without partiality or prejudice execute the office of voice of the House of Representatives and I will support the Constitution and law of this state.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If anyone else here could be with you. Aye, station.
I agree too.
Do affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States, and I will be faithful in virtue of the state of Maryland, and I will support the constitutional laws thereof, and I will do the best of my skill and judgment diligently and faithfully without partiality or prejudice execute the office of voice of the House of Representatives and I will support the Constitution and law of this state. Thank you. Can you take these with you? Sign those and leave those to Kelly.
Thank you.
For the record, thank you for doing that for the town, and for those of you that have not been, that is a job that takes some time, especially on that night, to count the votes and correct. Moving right along, Town Administrator Report, Steve?
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll go ahead and start with the February Administrative Report. The Sheets' expansion MTBE issue Environmental Alliance, on behalf of Sheets, has requested that the double sampling with Fountain Valley Labs be discontinued. That request has been granted based on no discrepancies over the past several years. There is no change in regards to the S.H.A. projects, our solar project, we do have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday, March the 14th, at 2:00 PM in regards to receiving the first draft of the study by CQI. I invite the Mayor and the Council to that, if you're available. The Ethics Ordinance Draft is currently under review with the State Ethics Commission. The Charter changed in regards to the Police Department and Town Administrator, you have received draft on this from our attorney, so if you would like to comment on that, I appreciate it. Our Maryland Energy Administration Grant, the letter of intent was completed by the March 1st deadline, the application form is currently being completed, in fact, I completed it today, and of course, we'll meet the deadline of April 1st. It appears we will receive around $20,000 in grants for that. I copied the Mayor and Council in regards to a letter to Principal Clark at Manchester Valley High School in reference to a youth representative. I have not received anything back from Principal Clark, Councilman Benter.
I've not heard anything.
Very good. Under new construction and code enforcement, construction continues and enforcement continues. Under miscellaneous items, I attended the monthly WRCC meeting on February the 27th. A presentation was given by Glenn Edwards, who is Carroll County's NPDES representative in regards to illicit and illegal discharges into the stormwater system. Our DPW employees will be receiving training on March 14th on how to spot and identify illegal discharges. Our cleaning bid contract is still under review, and Doug Strong's Eagle Scout project over at the post office is approximately 90% complete. Now, that really turned out well over there, I've had a lot of good comments about that. Moving right along, we'll go ahead and get into the February 2013 Public Works Report. You have in front of you the monthly water and wastewater status report. For the water, wastewater, and stormwater study, we had a meeting on March the 1st. The company gave us a progress report on that, that's moving right along. The Manchester Valley High School pumping station status, the mobilization has started, the shop drawings for the equipment are currently being reviewed and approved. You may have seen some work being done down there over the last several weeks. I also included both under the information for water and wastewater, our water pumping comparisons, and also our water collection, wastewater collection comparisons going back four years, so you can review that information. Under wastewater, the wastewater treatment plant was in compliance for all permanent parameters for February. The switch over to spray irrigation took place on March 1st. I had mentioned to you before in my previous report about the NPDES training under maintenance roads and parks. We have an action item tonight, and we did receive bids back on the 2,000 Chevrolet utility pickup truck, so that's an action item we have to act on. The gazebo project, open space project is underway at Christmas Tree Park. The gazebo will be delivered over the next several weeks, I want to thank my parks folks and my maintenance department folks for doing a good job on that. We had seven snow and ice events for February, and also with us tonight is Mr. Curtis Blank. He is here this evening in regards to some proposals to the skate park. Any questions for me?
Hey Steve, looking at average gallons of water pump per day during February and January, do you know, I mean, obviously February's less days, so the total gallons would be less. What the difference is?
Yep.
You know, why the $35,000?
We had nine water leaks in January. Yep. We finally got those under control. I believe if I go back in my report, I believe seven of them were on the homeowner's side and two were actually on our side, and actually, I'm pretty sure in January, we had a water main break on Park Avenue. My memory serves me right.
I think you're right.
Steve, as far as the youth representative that we're working on, I'm wondering if there's, if we could reach out to Principal Clark again and find out maybe if there's a, you know, poli sci teacher or somebody?
We can do that.
Who might?
Yes.
Take that off his plate. Also, would we be offering service hours for this? Is that a?
Yes, I believe with the past youth reps, we did, yes.
Okay, maybe I just throw that out there to sweeten the pot.
Correct. Yes.
You want to talk about that? The charter change?
We can.
You said you wanted to discuss the charter change?
I sent you information, I sent you a draft copy of information from our attorney in regards to two options, so, you know, you can discuss that between yourselves, just get back with me with any recommendations, and I'll ship them off to the attorney.
So we have an action item in here as well. Should be a paper here in your packet.
Yes, you have, you have a memo from Donnie Nodd, our Director of Public Works. We had a 2,000 Chevrolet 3500 pickup truck with utility body and snowplow. We did have a minimum bid on that, the blue book value was 8,500, that was our minimum bid. We did receive two bids, one from Claude Warner for 8,801 dollars, and the other from Roger Harris Senior, excuse me, that did not meet the minimum. It is staff recommendation to go with Mr. Warner's bid of 8,801 dollars.
I make a motion that we receive Claude Warner's bid, or accept Claude Warner's bid for 8,801 dollars for an hour.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
For the record, I'm not related to.
To that Warner?
No.
Please say.
Well, I would have told him he could come in a lot lower than that. Okay, anything else for Steve?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Police report, have a police report here submitted by Sergeant Getz. Some highlights include, they responded for 60 more calls for service during the month, four arrests, three thefts, one aggravated assault, five vehicle collisions, two involving personal injuries. We did have a gentleman at the January meeting express some concerns about the 3,000 block of Westminster Street with speeding. The police did do some additional, some exploratory enforcement in that area, identified that, you know, there really was a problem there. They've done some enforcement over the past month, so everybody knows, and that enforcement will continue until we can get that area under control. I don't know if I see him here tonight. I guess that's it. It is also, you know, a reminder to, there have been some incidents of people breaking into cars, stealing easy items, it's a very common crime we have in the areas, most of us, a lot of us don't tend to lock everything at our house, including our cars, and people will kind of roll through neighborhoods at night and hit as many as they can in the neighborhood, so remind you, lock your car, you know, what even is left in the driveway. As we're moving on, I know there's a lot of people here tonight, as a reminder, if you'd like to speak, please sign the sign-in sheet, and some of you guys will probably repeat and know the routine, so please sign the sign-in sheet, put it on the top of you like to speak on. If you don't want to speak, that's fine, if you change your mind later, then we'll have you kind of come up and state your name, and that way we have a record of, you know, who's here and says what. There's also a, on the back of all these, this is not new, this has been here for five or six years, but just a code of conduct, so we'd like to ask everybody to, and it's been fined, but just as a reminder. All right, Mr. Curtis Blank has, he emailed us, what, a month or so ago?
Yeah, about a month.
About a month ago, and would like to propose some changes to the skate park, so he is on the agenda, and floor is yours.
Go ahead and start, I'll set the stage. Curtis came in, he, as Mayor Warner said, he sent us an email, we responded back, he came in, and he spoke to myself, my Director of Public Works, my Maintenance Supervisor, and also my Park Supervisor, with some ideas that he had for the skate park. He has come up with some drawings, he had showed us these drawings. To add a little caveat to this, we are behind him 100% as far as the management staff is. So Curtis, the floor is yours.
All right, I'll try to explain this as easily as possible. On the front of the package I passed out, I have this beautiful sketch illustration of Manchester Skate Park from the entrance, and everything that isn't circled with the green Sharpie is previously built there, and under each of the little obstacles I sketched in, there's a number one, two, and three, and that's basically applies to, the next page is in the packet, each item is like, there's a computer-generated image of it underneath it, and the items I proposed to build there would be, number one, the concrete grind ledge made out of cinder blocks and angle iron along the sides, so us could, we could like, grind on it. The second one is a concrete quarter pipe, there's a, I think there should be three different sketches of each one, just to show the framework and how it's built. And then the third would be a concrete kicker ramp, which is a ramp that tricks are done off of into the air rather than on the coping on the top. And the reason why I would like to build these is because I've used the skate park for, since, I can't even remember when, like, sixth grade, and I've, I've seen the rise and fall of the skate park, I've noticed a lot of vandalism and other bad things going on down there, and I just thought, frequently using it, if there was some new stuff built, maybe out of concrete, that would kind of raise the morale of the park and bring down some of the bad behaviors going down there. And talking to my friends that go down there, I, I think they'd like to see a lot of these things that I've proposed to build, and I would just like your permission to build them myself if I could come up with the funds on my own.
I don't have a question for you, Curtis, this is directed at Steve and Kelly. If you guys saw the Carroll County Times today, there was an article about the skate park in Sykesville, and their insurance rates for their skate park are going up because they have some structures that were built in there by young people like Curtis out of concrete, and that apparently can get above two feet. Is that something you guys have looked at regarding insurance?
We have not, we've had the same insurance carrier since the skate park was built. There's a possibility that, as you say, there could be some changes, so we can check into that.
They said, the article read that they've only had one payout during the entire time that the skate park has been open, I have no idea how long, for about $714. And the insurance company isn't really worried about too much, but they did say with these fixed or concrete apparatus or apparatus, it would raise their rates.
Okay.
So, I'm on board with the mission, but I think that's something that we need to address, if that is an issue for us.
We can, we can definitely, Curtis, we will check into that for you.
Okay.
So that's based on, who built it, or based on the materials?
Material.
If...
If I remember, it was material because it was concrete.
If...
And above two feet? Above two feet and above concrete, correct.
How tall is that grind rail?
The grind ledge would be probably about 14 inches, no, no higher than the knee of, you know, your average person. The main concern would be the quarter pipe, because that would probably be about as high as this, but I don't know if it really makes a difference if it's made out of cement or concrete, but if cement is like, the loophole through that, I mean, I could always use cement.
I, I don't know. I read the article real quick when I got home from work, glanced at it, I remember certain facts.
I'd say if it could be modified, and, and just take concrete and cement out of the picture, if it could be modified to be made out of wood, do you feel that that would be a problem?
If it could, I'd, I'd highly prefer it to be made out of concrete, just because I see how people kind of tend to disrespect things down there, and concrete, if they did choose to do that, it'd give them a little bit of a harder time.
Understand.
I just feel like it would last longer with the weathering and stuff, since we have some pretty harsh winters.
Right, to answer both your questions, we'll check on that.
It may not be an issue, it's just that it was on the Carroll County Times today.
Sure, understand.
Could we, I mean, assuming that your considerations of two feet in the materials is something that's going to trigger?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just relaying what I read. I don't know, I don't know if that has been a point of discussion with our insurer, or is it something we need to address and get, hey, yes or no, before he starts or the project can start? I don't want to see work being done, and then insurance company says, hey, guess what, your rates are going up.
How about?
And one other thing I forgot to mention is, I, I work a pretty low-income job, so the time that it would take to build these would be around a year, it's not going to be like, a wake up next week and there's like, a great skate park, it's going to be like, block by block, and eventually, oh, wouldn't that get, you know, like...
Like I said, I'm fully supportive, I have three sons, they all enjoyed skate party when they went to the park. That was in the Carroll County Times today. I don't know if it's an issue or not, it may or may not be.
Yeah, because I, I got some support from my other friends that go there, and their parents, so everyone's kind of hyped on it, so we're just, we're just trying to get it built and made, basically.
I don't think this group's going to criticize you for not moving fast on things.
Well, I'd appreciate it, I'm definitely no high-roller.
Not yet.
Yeah, I'm a skate park contractor, I guess.
Could we, does anybody have a problem if, and, you know, assume maybe this works for you, that Steve and Kelly could check into the insurance considerations, and then we could kind of, we could give conditional approval to start on any items at, at your pace that don't change our insurance situation?
Correct.
So, like, say that grind ledge, or, you know, if that fits, then do that, and if something else, we'll kind of push the other two out until we can kind of figure out what's going on insurance-wise.
That would be brilliant, that's why the grind ledge was number one, because that, that's like, 20 bucks to make.
You're, you're one, you're one step ahead of me.
So that, that'll be done by tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, most likely.
Okay, we need to vote, you guys want to take a vote on that plan?
Sure.
Any motion?
I make a motion, we go along with it in stages until we find out what the, the insurance may be, if it's nothing, and that'll coincide with your movement.
All right.
Okay?
I second that.
All right, motion is seconded for discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you guys very much for your time, I appreciate it.
I'll be down with my skateboard next by Tuesday.
Stress test is grind ledge.
Lori, do we have anybody signed in?
Yes, please.
And again, for those of you that were here last week, or last month, rather, I'm going to do my best to read names, so you can correct me. Mr. Friedman?
I'm here.
If you'd like coming up, kind of state your name, address, and then...
Barry Friedman, 2760 Washington Way in Manchester, Maryland. Reason I'm up here today is that we've had an issue with traffic speeding, stop sign running throughout the area. I've talked to Steve several times, I've talked to the police officers in Manchester several times, and this has been going ahead of you, radar set up in October for about two weeks, and results aren't that great.
Just the speed sign, or?
Speed limit, stop sign, people are running stop signs.
No, I mean, when you say it was two weeks, is that, you're talking about the speed trailer, or?
Yeah, the speed trailer was up for two weeks.
Okay.
You know, the police officers I've talked to said, oh, we're going to be sitting over there, I haven't seen them, I leave in the morning. Biggest problem I have is that roughly around 6:00 and 6:15, there's two cars run through the neighborhood in the morning that run the stop sign, and the reason I can tell, I've seen them twice.
Which is, and I'm sorry to cut you off, is this 2760 or 22? Washington originally?
Yep.
Oh, I live in Washington originally.
I know.
Okay, and I know this, too.
One car, he lives on Washington, these are residents, that the problem is.
Right.
One is an adult with young kids, but he has a little white sign, and he comes up through the intersection and does not stop, and I can hear it, because the engine revs up, and it doesn't slow down, and I can hear it when he comes right through the intersection, southwestern and Washington Way, right up through my, through the originally.
Going towards Park?
Yep.
Okay.
For a while.
Right.
And he goes to the top of the hill, and he doesn't stop there either, or he might slow down, but he doesn't stop. We've said something to him in the past, and he's still doing it, he did it, I didn't hear him this morning, but I heard him yesterday morning.
Coming from Manchester Farms?
Mm-hmm, he lives on the other side of southwestern on Washington Way. There's several other cars, biggest issue I have is also, my son is, we're teaching him how to drive, and we've had people pass him, because he's doing the speed limit at 20, people say, hey, I'm not going to wait, I'm going to pass him, and this is also happening with Steve, we talked about that right afterwards, so they'll set the stop sign, they don't want to wait the stop sign, they'll go around the car. Or even on southwestern Charmel, that intersection, they don't stop at that stop sign either, they think it's a yield sign. I've stopped many people, and said, you know, it's a stop sign, it's a neighborhood, got kids, got the hills, got falls rolling down the hills, it's a safety issue. Problem I have is that I don't see the police out there. I know you're shorthanded, but, you know, I know they don't come on to 6, and everything they don't want to do is sitting down here, and they say, well, there's no place to sit that they can see anything. Well, when it's dark out, they can sit up on originally above your house?
Yep.
And see that stop sign very clearly in the dark, if they don't have their lights on, and be able to identify cars going through. Now, it's getting lighter now, that's going to be another issue.
Or back by the pump house.
Well, the pump house, they can see it when they go down.
Or back by the well, you could.
So, but there's several issues back in there.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know Doug lives back up in there, you live back in there, you know, there's issues, and, you know, it's been an ongoing thing, this, the test was back in October 5th through the 24th of October, and, yeah, I saw the police back in there a couple of times after that, but I haven't seen anything recently.
Okay, so you, and I have not noticed a, so I'm either gone and not home at 6:00 in the morning, or I'm not aware at 6:00 in the morning of the intersection, but you think there's a predictable pattern at 6, 6:15?
6:15.
Weekdays?
One Pacific, three o'clock, I could tell.
Okay, I, I think I know the video we're talking about, I've seen it. I've noticed, and I've communicated in my, like, a 10 to 10:30 PM pattern with the same thing?
Yep, 7:00 in the morning also.
Okay.
My wife, she leaves around 7:00, and she sits, she goes down Washington to southwestern, and people run that stop sign right there, that southwestern.
So you, you live near it, to it, I've called it, I think it's the most disrespectful stop sign in town.
You want a Charmel? For ours.
I think, Charmel's probably pretty bad, too.
Yeah, so I mean, it's just, it's a whole area, and I know there are other areas that have the same issue.
Yeah, they're right, I mean, there's a couple.
But, you know, I don't see any presence, I've even talked to sheriffs, and they said, we'll do what we can do, but I don't see them over there, you know, coming through. Now, I'm not home between 8:00 and 5:00, but I'm home in the morning, I'm home those evenings, and I really don't see anything.
I, you know, I work from home sometimes, I don't know that it's as bad during the middle of the day, there's not that much traffic during the middle of the day.
But I think it's 6:00 in the morning, you know, in the afternoon, you know, when traffic starts picking up the kids, and that's when it's going to get bad.
And I think you see, and I've noticed that late at night, there's not as much traffic again, but the people that come through, fly through, so, I will, I will address it and we'll get some people out there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, sure. Melinda Smith?
Okay, hello, as we all know, I was here in February, we discussed the Chief of Police, and you said there really haven't been any updates except for the background investigation was done, is that correct?
So, we've had a background investigation done?
Okay.
And completed, a report given to us.
Okay, so the question I have is, was, because obviously you all read it and had to initial it, I can't read it, I understand that right now, but the question I have is, and can I proceed, because I know that there's other people here, so am I allowed to proceed with this right now?
So, well, I'm not exactly sure what you have, but it's, it's the same rules that...
Okay, I'm not going to, I'm not going to mention names, I'm not doing any of that, okay?
I've got a question right there, how do you know that we all read it and we all initialed it? Because that might not be a true statement.
Well, let me just say, I've spoken to everybody with Mr. Pacelli, and I've pretty much spoken to every councilperson, and they told me when they were going to read it and sign it.
Pretty much? Have you talked to everyone?
I spoke to everyone but Mr. Pacelli.
Okay.
And I wasn't allowed to speak to him, I was told, so. I spoke to Mr. Riley yesterday, and I was on the way to the bank, and I told him that I would speak to him here, because I couldn't speak to him at the time, but everybody else, I believe they'll... But everybody else, I believe they'll tell you, I spoke to them all.
Okay, so, before you start, and I guess dogging for everybody, like, we wanna have a forum so that people can, like, share concerns, share issues, address the council. Really like to, and I don't, I don't wanna cut anybody off, I've never been big into censoring anybody, or, but, if anything, if, if something gets to the point where we kind of have like a zoo and kind of back and forth, then we're gonna, I'll have to cut it off.
Well, that's the question I have, then, where am I allowed to speak and say what I have to say?
You can.
I'm just asking because I don't know what else to speak.
And I don't know what you have to say exactly, and, you know, I have spoken with you, but I don't, I didn't get a chance to catch up in the last couple of days, but. I'm okay with people sharing concerns or saying what they want, if it gets to the point where, you know, it's just kind of turning into a television show, it's not really the level of decorum that.
Okay, I mean, I kind of feel like it's already turned into that, but that's fine, I'll proceed. I get, the one question I have, the main question to start with is, with every, with whoever has read the paperwork, and I know I've spoken to everybody here, was further investigation done on the other issues that I asked about? Versus just the not sustained situation? Did it go further than that? Because I'm gonna be very honest with you when I tell you that the investig, the investigator, I felt like I was being interviewed, he came to my house, went through frame by frame by frame as he told me he watched on the T V, and asked me everything that I said, and made me repeat what I said, and where did I know this from, and that type of thing. I'm not the one applying for chief of police, I'm the only one that had facts that I had already given, which I was willing to give. You know, he contacted the other two parents, and the one parent said she felt like she was being interrogated. We're the innocent people, we're just trying to state our opinions, and we're having to go through, you know, basically, the same interview, and I, you know, and that's fine, I answered it, I told him what I knew. He told me a lot of things that I didn't know, which was very interesting. And, you know, he told me that he spoke to the M S P, and they told him that he was within his legal rights to pull my daughter's driving record. And I'm gonna tell you, he must've left the part out, because when you're out of jurisdiction, you can't, 'cause I have it right here, and everybody can read it. Anybody can get it off the internet, I got it off the internet, okay? That's one issue, and that's, that's neither here nor there, we've already talked about that, we know that can't be done, I can show anybody who wants to read it. And, you know, I'm sure there's, I wouldn't bring any police officers up there in here, but I know there's some that can certainly tell you that.
For the record, is that a report you have, or is that?
It's all the internet that states, when you're out of jurisdiction, it basically, I don't, you don't need to read the whole thing, obviously, but the first couple pages I highlighted, the information's there. I specifically asked the police officer, you know, a lot of questions about it, and he told me that he was gonna check into it rather and dig deeper, he was told to dig deeper. My question is, did he? I'm just curious, okay?
I guess, I wanna.
Obviously, nobody can tell me anything they're not allowed to say, or whatever.
Right, I wanna make sure.
They say no, so we're not allowed to say, I understand. But I also have information here on not sustained, it says what not sustained means, and I'm not, you know, I brought a whole bunch of stuff here, and obviously, it's probably not the time to get into it, 'cause I've looked at everybody's face when some things happen, so I understand that, but we have to have somewhere that we can speak about this then, because the people of the town deserve, as you can see, there's thirty people here. The people of the town deserve an answer, and then we're bringing in new council people, and am I gonna have to go through this whole thing again with all new council people if you guys don't come back? I mean, I don't think, I'll be honest with you, I don't think it's fair of the candidate to be sitting around for six months waiting, I don't think it's fair for the people of the town, I don't think it's fair to have to go through this with a whole new council if, you know, you guys aren't here. I mean, I don't understand what's taking so long, and we keep going through this and through this and spending more money, and, well, I know they say we haven't spent money, but somebody's paying the investigator, unless it's the town of Hampstead, I guess. Somebody has to pay for the polygraph and all that kind of stuff, so we've spent some money, so either we need to make a decision and say, okay, he's in, or he's not in, and if he gets in, then the town will deal with what they have to deal with. And I'm not, I'm the only one here, well, I'm not the only one here that's gonna speak, I'm the only one speaking up, obviously, people here have things to say, but a lot of people can't speak for certain reasons, or don't want to, because they don't wanna, you know, have a problem. And, you know, and I guess one other question I have is, is it normal practice for you to be contacted by the person that's being investigated the day prior to you being interviewed? Because I find that interesting that the person that was being interviewed, the candidate, is one step ahead of everything. We were contacted the day prior that he wanted to talk about some things, we didn't contact him back, 'cause I was told not to, the lawyer told me don't contact him back. So, why, how would he know to contact me the day before I'm getting interviewed by an investigator? I mean, I think there's a, I'd be honest with you, right now, I hate to say it, I think there's a little bit of good old boy system going on here, because there's too many coincidences of things that are going on, and that being one of them. I didn't contact the person back, I do have the voicemail, if anybody's interested in hearing it, I doubt you wanna hear it here, but you can hear it in private. And, you know, I just, I'm really, really concerned about this, I'm really concerned how things are going, and I don't know, I don't know where we're heading from here, because I can't ever get a clear answer, every answer I hear is, it's progress, it's progress, it's progress. Well, if he's done everything he's supposed to do, and we're gonna hire him, vote on it tonight and hire him, I don't, I mean, vote, nominate him, vote on him, whoever's gonna vote, I mean, everybody here's read all the stuff, does everybody know who they're voting for? I mean, vote. Well, I keep dragging it on, I don't understand why we keep dragging it on, either we're taking him or we're not, I think we know if we're taking him or not, and from your statement earlier, it makes me feel like I think we know we're taking him. So, what are we waiting for? I mean, all I can ask is that, you know, either we withdraw the offer tonight, or let's vote on it and bring him in as chief of police, and be done with it. You know, I mean, I'm gonna file for the Freedom of Information Act to get a copy of the investigation when it's all done anyway, just because I really would like to see what was really done, and I have the legal right to do that. And my biggest concern is, I'm just worried that I'm gonna have to do this before new council people again, I don't wanna be here every second, second Tuesday of every month. You probably don't want me here every second Tuesday of every month, I, look, I'm not a dummy, I mean, I'm an educated person, I know that, I wouldn't want me here. But I do want, I just want some answers, and I think the other people, that's why everybody's here, we all want some answers. You know, let somebody speak up and say, you know, I mean, I was told, I know Mr. Pacelli can't talk, I know that, but let's, let's hear what everybody thinks, I mean, we could, why can't we just nominate him and vote if that's what we're gonna do? Either, because the new council comes in, what, May first? We have one more meeting, so either we nominate him in and just say, hey, we're gonna take him, and we're gonna try it, and let the town deal with what they're gonna deal with, or say, we're gonna withdraw it, and let's start over. And this is, this is a waste of time and money and everything else going into it. I just, I don't understand, I can't figure out for the life of me, I'm an educated person, I may not be a police officer, I'm not the mayor, I'm not council people, but what are we waiting for? What else are we doing if the background investigation's done, and it's been done for two weeks, what are we waiting for? Does anybody know?
Is that what your question is?
My main question is, what are we waiting for, why aren't we just voting him in? Nominate him and vote him in, if everybody knows who they're, if the people have read it, or that most of you have read it, or whatever, everybody has their feeling and their opinion, okay? Who, what they're gonna do, I think we all know that, so, you know.
I mean, I don't wanna speak for everybody else, I don't, you know, being, probably having access to more information about this than, than you may, I don't know that everybody knows what they're gonna do. It may seem that way, and I don't wanna speak for anybody individually, but I don't think that's kind of where everybody is.
But then what other information are they getting, if the background investigation's done, how much more can they get to decide? I mean, what else are we getting? What else is gonna sway their decision?
I think that there could be follow-up meetings with, with a candidate, there'd be an opportunity to talk to the investigators, which we haven't had. So we have a written report, but we haven't had an opportunity to walk through that with them, and, so, I, I know it's, it takes a long time to get, it has taken a long time, and this process is not fast. The best, most honest answer I can give, and I think I've told you this before, is, me personally, and I believe the town as a whole, we're trying to get as much information as we can to get to the best candidate and make the best decision we can.
We only have one candidate, so.
No, there's more candidates.
You said there's only one person that you made a conditional offer to.
There's one person that has gone to the level of background investigation.
Okay, so if we're only doing, why aren't we doing it for everybody else, then? If they're in the running, why is one person doing everything? Just curious. If everybody's in the running, or if five people are in the running, why do we have one person doing a background check, one person doing a polygraph, and one person making phone calls? I mean, these are questions I'd like to answer, I mean, if that's the case, and we have all these people, why? Why do we have one person?
We have one person that we decided to go forward with the background investigation, I, I don't.
That's what I'm saying, there's one person that you made an offer to, so I'm assuming that's who we're trying to get, I mean, it's quite obvious that's who we're trying to get, I mean, by the, by the interview I got, everything I said, he tried to discredit me, which is why I had to bring all this paperwork and show him that he's not gonna discredit me, my information was correct.
I can't speak to your interview, I mean, I don't know, I, I think that you wanted to be on the interview list, or you wanted to be part of that, I don't.
No, I didn't want to be, he contacted me.
I guess, probably because of the last meeting, I don't know.
I'm sure, well, believe me, I know, 'cause he went through frame for frame and questioned me on every word I said, and that's fine, I don't care, I had nothing to hide, it was the truth, I can back up the truth.
So.
But my question is, again, I mean, I guess, are the council people allowed to speak? I mean, what are we, why, what's the holdup, why can't?
I would have to go ahead and speak, so, I did read the, what I was given, a packet of information, I was told that there was more information that had not yet been released, and there's more information that has to be done yet based on our next moves. As far as the conditional offer, that is a human resource policy, it's pretty standard, and at least in industries that I work in, we don't offer multiple candidates the same position, and it's kind, I mean, we offer them one at a time and go through that process, John, is.
Okay, I've never seen it done like that. I work for a big company as well, and I'm not gonna say who, I work for a huge company.
Okay.
And you have to give everybody the same right, if you're, if you're giving everybody the same option and opportunity, then they all deserve the same opportunity to go through these things. I mean, I was told by a council person, which I will not say who, that there was another person that was in the running that had some skeletons in their closet problem, they got rid of them right away. Why? Why do we get rid of them when we're still going back and forth about the same person?
Well, I, I mean, I wasn't on the committee for the selections, but, I mean, the procedure was simple, you know, we had the applicants, you know, it was open application, came in, the committee reviewed and selected, you know, a handful to move from resume phase to interview phase, and then all the names, everything was blotted, were blotted out, so that they had no indication who the person was till they actually walked through the door for the, for the interview. And then based on those interviews, that committee selected one person to make a conditional offer to. So when we're talking about other candidates, we're talking about other candidates who are in that pool of people who were brought in for interviews. Those are still.
Okay, so you're saying there's still, there's one candidate at this point, though, correct?
Well, there's one candidate that we've moved forward with, with a conditional offer. Now, that's, offer is conditional for a reason, right?
I think you've been saying that, I mean, we've said at the last meeting, too, there's a conditional offer, there's a conditional offer.
Sure.
And, like I said before, I don't think it's fair to a candidate either to sit around for four or five months as a conditional offer, move forward. I mean, if we're gonna move forward, move forward with it, I mean, I know there's political pressure, I've been told that, to get a, to get a chief of police, to get a chief of police. I mean, let's get one, if, if everybody, if, we have all this information, and he was done his interview weeks ago, 'cause he told me, and when I called into the town office, I know the, the paper was there, the folder was there, or the envelope, two weeks ago. All I'm saying is, I just feel like we are, I don't know why we're sitting on this, or what we're doing, I mean, what else, what other information we need, I understand, look, I understand that people have to do a drug test, and their physical, and all that stuff. That's fine, I'm talking about more background information that nobody can give me, 'cause I understand I'm not privy to it, but nobody can tell me if they've read enough that, what they wanna do, nobody has an answer, and if they have all this information that a background investigation's been done, and all these people have been interviewed, somebody has to have an answer. I don't understand.
Well, if I could just speak again, so the, the packet that we got, I mean, we, I think, I believe we've all, within the last two weeks have read it, and we're going through these closed personnel, you know, meetings, to go through the process. I know that our next steps are to actually do another interview with the candidate, and to do an interview with the, with the reviewer, with the, the background investigation team. Because those are, there's open-ended questions, and I'm taking into account your, your testimony with that report, and I'd like to get clarification.
I mean, we've spoken.
Right, so right now, you know, we're not in a position, I don't believe, to make a recommendation on a, on a vote, because frankly, there's still, there's still questions out there. You know, I know I've got questions, and right now, tonight, I'm not prepared to, to cast a vote on this candidate, 'cause there's still too many questions, and I, and also, to be fair to the process, fair to him and the other candidates. You know, you know what I mean, so I wanna make sure we've gone through that, and then I know that if we decide that we're not gonna go with this candidate, then we go to the next person that would then be given a conditional offer. The same kind of package would be, would be offered, and then the same whole background check has to be done on that next person. So, it's a terribly long process, and I agree that it is a long time, I wish it could be, you know, expedited on certain levels, and I'm not, unlike with the other fellows, I'm not on that committee.
Okay, so here's the question, what happens when the new council comes in, if, say you guys don't get voted back in, I don't know if you will, you won't, whatever, I don't know. What happens? Do you have the whole council has to go through again, or do you guys stay in, in for, in area, in the place, and you vote on them? What happens?
Well, if the, if the process was beyond the elections and we weren't here, then we would.
So we have to start the whole process over, and they have to read everything, and everybody has to do this again?
Well, I would think that, I wouldn't imagine the process would be nearly as lengthy considering all the documentation would be there, and the meetings would be held, and the information from those meetings would already be in those candidates' hands. When I say candidates, I'm talking about town council candidates.
Okay, I mean, I'm, look, I'm a town person, I'm only one person, I mean, there's a lot of people here that have an opinion, I'm very disappointed, I think this has been, I'll be honest with you, I think it's been a mockery. And, I mean, from what I've heard, if you, the interviewer, the stuff he told me, I didn't even know some of it, I did know some of the things, but he knew all this stuff, he should've been investigating it before he even came to see me. And, I mean, I just think, and nothing against anybody here personally, 'cause I know you guys don't do the interviews and things like that, but it's an embarrassment, I'm gonna be very honest with you, with some of the stuff I've seen, I mean, I'm not an investigator, but I know, I know enough to know that some of the things that have happened, I mean, this has turned out to be, it's, it's a mockery. And, I mean, it's, it's embarrassing, I mean, I know, I know the other person was here last week, and I know she speaks up a lot, I didn't know her until I came here, but, I mean, she's right about the liability, and it's a lot of it. It's a lot of it, and there's, if everybody's here is welcome to be, wants to be a part of that, then that's certainly your choice. You make the decision, and, you know, I'll file for the Freedom of Information Act, I'll get a copy of it, I'll see what's what, and then we'll proceed from there if he gets hired. That's, you know, your choices, but I, I would hope that, I'll be honest with you, I'm disappointed, I can't get one answer. I can't get an answer except for we're looking into it, we're looking into it, I, that's what I hear every week, every month.
So, I mean, you obviously, you have concerns about this candidate.
We've had this discussion last month.
And you, and you brought these concerns forward.
And I'm not the only one, I mean, you can look around.
And then, as a result of some of those concerns, you know, we've, you know, I mean, had you not come forward with your concerns, the report we'd have gotten from, from the police officers would have been even more brief, right? It would have been a very brief report, and we would have very little go on, and we probably would have already moved forward with this candidate. I'm speculating, I'm not.
I don't know about that, 'cause the mayor, the mayor said last month that there was a ground swell of people that called, I didn't know the ground swell, I was one person, and evidently, the stuff they told him was a lot more than I had, I can tell you that by speaking to the investigator. So, me just coming up to speak, you had a lot more information than what I gave, I know that for a fact, and, you know, whether you act on that or you don't act on it.
Either, either way, whether it was people or other people.
Right, I mean, I, I'll tell, obviously, I came up here and spoke, everybody knows that, but I'm not gonna take the sole, whatever, a lot of people had a lot of opinions that were a lot worse than mine.
My point is not the number of people or anything else, my, my point is, even if it was one citizen coming forward and saying, I have these concerns, this is, you know, something that you should consider, we pause the process to consider, in the meantime, we've gotten a report, and we are looking, as, as Tammy pointed out, to meet with the investigators and follow up on some of the things that you've pointed out. So, I, you know, I, I wish the process was faster, you know, I mean, perhaps if we, this was our full-time jobs, we could devote forty hours a week to it.
Look, I understand that, I totally understand, I just feel like, and forget about the process even being slow, slow, it's how the process was handled, I mean, there's just so many things that you can't get answers on, and as people of the town, I think we deserve some answers. Nobody can give any, and Mr. Pacelli, I know he's not allowed to speak, I understand that, or he, you know, I, I didn't even think he would be allowed to be here, but he's not allowed to speak, but then let's have a private meeting, let's have a Q and A, let's have something that some people can get some answers. Why can't we bring up the investigator up here and let us ask him some questions? He has all the answers, let us ask him, we don't have to, we don't have to talk to the candidate, we don't have to ask you, let him come with the answers.
Yeah, I don't know if they would do that.
Okay, well, that's, they probably won't, I, they probably won't, I understand that, but all I'm saying is, nobody can get answers, and I mean, I'm beating my head against the wall along with all these other people, they're taking every Tuesday night, coming here to get no answers.
I, you're assuming we have the answer, though.
You have a lot of them, you have the folder.
And we're not giving them, well, I'm saying, we don't have the ultimate answer that you're looking for, is whether or not we're prepared to move forward with this candidate or not. And as, as person Black pointed out, we don't have that answer, and that's ultimately the answer you're looking for, is, are we prepared to move forward?
Yeah, because I'm not willing to, well, I shouldn't say I'm willing to, I'm gonna have to be here every Tuesday night, because a new council's gonna come in, he's not gonna be the chief of police, and we're gonna go through the whole thing again, and waste all this time, and all this money, and all this aggravation, because there's no decision made. How about everybody gets together, talks to the candidate, talks to the investigator this week, and says, look, we have to know by April first, there's new people coming in May first, we have to make a decision. Instead of waiting till May or June, when everybody has to start all over again, the candidate has to go through it all again, because he's gonna have to speak to the council people, we're gonna have to go through it all again, the mayor's gonna have to speak about everybody, 'cause I don't know if everybody's coming back or not, nobody knows. Do you understand, do you, do you see where I'm coming from?
I think it's fair to say, we're, we're aware of those considerations, and we've had that discussion.
Okay.
And we really are trying to get to the best, fastest answer we can.
So, we have no deadline, basically, though?
Well, there's never a deadline, right? I mean, I, I don't want to say that in, like, the wrong way. There's not like a, we, we decided when we embarked on this that we were going to try to get the best answer we could, not fill up positions as fast as we could. And that was something that everybody agreed on. Um, we didn't think it would take this long, and we would like to move forward as fast as possible. Roadblocks come up, things happen, and as Councilman Bender said, we pause and then say, okay, well, let's, let's take a look at this and make sure that we're getting everything that we can get. And then, schedule, you know, it's, you know, we don't have like, we can do this at nine, then do this at eleven, then do this at one, and just be done.
I understand everybody else here has a job, I mean, I totally understand that, I'm just saying, I don't know, I guess, I guess I have a sense of urgency with things, and I kinda feel like there should be more of a sense of urgency of getting this settled and getting the people together. I mean, I'm quite sure that if you picked one night, that the investigator could be here, the candidate could probably be here, figure it out, and vote. I mean, I, I, I can't understand, but I mean, that's fine, that's your process, you have to do what you have to do. I will tell you, I'll be here every second Tuesday of the month until you decide, and probably every second Tuesday of the month after that, depending on what you decide. So, you know, I know we don't wanna media circus, but I can tell you, it's headed that way.
You, you, you could run, too. And then, then you can get-
Mr. Riley told me I have to go through all this paperwork, and I don't wanna do that.
Scaring our candidates off.
No, I'm just kidding. But, I mean, you know, I thought about it, but right now, I mean, I have three children, you know, and I can, right. I understand that, that's what I'm saying, I understand you have three, I know how years are older, I know you don't have to babysit, but, um-
Grandkids.
Grandkids, true, but I mean, you know, so I understand where you're coming from. All I'm saying is, I just wish we could really get some answers and move along with this, because I think this is like a long process that, and I, I know I'm beating a dead horse now, so I'm gonna be done, but-
I agree with you on that. Not, not the dead horse part. It's a long process. I started, you snuck that in right before I-
Okay. So, you know, that's where we're at, and I, you know, I'll keep in contact because obviously, you know, I, along with some others, would like to know what's going on, and I'm sure there's gonna be other people that speak, because it's, we just need to do something. I mean, something needs to be done, we have a lot of information, let's get some more, let's move on, let's decide.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Joseph D'Antoni?
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, my name's Joe D'Antoni, I live on Limeboro Road in Manchester. Reason why I'm here is, on my part-time job, I work with a bunch of police officers, retired and active. And, one night at work, I was sitting in the background and listening to them talk, and it happened to be about one of the candidates for the chief of police. And, he apparently got in some trouble, uh, in Volmore County. And, in reference to, to avoid the trouble in being investigated, I heard he retired. Again, I'm not sure of the person's name, but according to what I heard from, you know, the police officers and everything down at work, that, you know, he was retiring to come here to be the chief of police. So, I'm assuming it's this candidate that everybody's talking about. And all, and also, the way they were talking, that everybody was underneath of him, didn't like him. He caused problems for them, not, I'm interested, it's just, I guess you're gonna say-
I don't mean to cut you off. So, and I don't think you were here last month, but one of the, and I probably should have reiterated some of the, some of the, you know, ground rules, I guess, is that, you know, you're, you're obviously free to say what you want, but in terms of like a forum and, and discussing this with respect to a particular candidate, really need to limit it to, you know, if you have a personal experience or you're, you can be for or against, right? You can support a candidate or not support a candidate, but we don't, you know, we wanna avoid just, you know, I heard from this person who knew this person.
Oh, I, I understand, but no, from being, like I said, the, the police officers that were in act, still working for Volmore County and everything, I'm, I say, I have, have to take their word, you know, with dealing with it, and I just wanted to bring it up.
Okay, so in that-
So, the candidate, now you guys can do what you need to do in reference to the candidate.
Okay.
And thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bradley Ikorst?
Brad Ikorst, Bradley Ikorst, Moorefield Court, and the Overlook Court Development. Just listening, I really didn't know exactly everything that was going on. I just know that with Boy Scouts and some other things that are going on, come up to watch things. My personal experience as being involved with background investigations, the agent that is doing it, that shares that information, and anything like that, that's a no. And all that other fun stuff. I know polygraphs, out by in-game, they take time for analysis. The background investigation does come in two and three different stages. You have your initial, and then you get more, then on the initial, you might get more people, then those other people are also asked questions, and then another layer. All that has to be compiled all into one, and, per, uh, no, it's not one report, you're in a, a report that is a summary of just things, other details have to be typed up and done and gone over. And, the individual that's being investigated will be sat down with the investigator again to talk about certain issues that have come up, so he can clarify them later. For the person that might be employed for whatever group he works for, can make a decision or give him, you know, a job of some sort. But, you know, I, it takes six months to eight months just on the background investigation, a special background investigation. Polygraphs can take two and three times to take if you can't do it the first time, if you've never done one the first time. So, that's, you know, all here and there. Other things I do for a living, hearsay. You can't report anything on hearsay. I can say anything. This person here, it could be true fact, but I'm not reporting the source, and if I say that, I'm, I'm not telling the truth. It's not something that I was physically involved with. FOIA is a great tool to use, I agree, agree with that, but be ready when that happens because the privacy of the people that gave information to that investigator, that so, you know, and all that, will be marked out. Personal information will be marked out. The simple fact is, I can say, I saw you rob a bank. Well, when that person that was investigated also can ask for that FOIA information, they're gonna protect me and/or you, saying that, oh, I can find out who it is and get back and get him. So, when you get this piece of paper back, uh, FOIA's Freedom of Information Act, it is, um, blotted out black. All that you're gonna see is someone's comments saying Manchester Valley here, or this, that, here, or anything else that is put into it. So, it just, it, it takes, I know it takes a long time. On what I have done in my lifetime, and, you know, it was twenty years in the Navy, and I had to go through polygraphs. I had to constantly go through background investigations. But, to think everything is gonna just be, you know, you know, one little piece of paper here, make a decision, you can't do that. I understand that. But also, when people are taking hearsay and turning it around and saying it's fact, it's also defamation of character. And those people also can be held accountable for saying things like that. And that's all I got to say.
Thanks, Brad. That is all we have on the list, does anybody else like to speak? Okay. There are none, we'll move into committee reports. Doug?
We are still continuing the code updates. Uh, we do have a meeting next Tuesday night, um, Stakers Overlook will be here. We did go out and we've done some checks with the fire trucks and stuff, and, um, that's where we're at with that. So, we'll be updating, um, I'm sure they'll be bringing in the next stage of what they wanna do there. That's next Tuesday.
Tammy?
All right, well, um, the Parks Foundation has some exciting news for the community. On March the twenty-third is the big egg hunt, it's at ten AM sharp. But, I would advise you to bring your children at least fifteen minutes early to get into their stations to grab the eggs, seriously. They're also having something on April sixteenth called Dig This. It's, um, a new challenge at the Pine Valley Park Prehistoric Hunter and Gatherer Camp Archaeology Site, Mr. Israel. So, that's at seven PM, these are all free to the community, um, it's at North Carroll Library, that particular event. And then, May fifth is the big Spring Fest, so there's three big events coming up. And if you've never been to Spring Fest, I would highly recommend everybody make an effort to get out there, take your family, invite friends, um, because it's a great display of Manchester's best, and all the surrounding supporting community entities. There's lots of fun stuff for people of all ages, crazy, like jumping rabbits and reptiles and just stuff, you know, that you don't always see running around in Manchester every day, so, um, you wanna make that, um, it's also a great fundraiser and friend-razor for the Parks Foundation, so, that's what's going on there.
Okay.
Uh, one thing, Councilperson Black, the, uh, meeting between the Nature Foundation and the Town Council, that's scheduled for April?
That is for next month, um, it's the second Monday of the month, so, I know, we've got-
April eighth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good.
Mm-hmm, so, yeah, and that's a joint, um, meeting at the Nature Center.
That is correct.
And, and anybody's welcome to come to that, but they're gonna be unveiling a really nice, um, strategic plan and kind of a summary for everybody, a PowerPoint presentation with all the events, it's, it's very well done, so you-
I'd very much appreciate if the mayor and the council could make their presence at that. The Nature Center helps us immensely on different items throughout the town as far as, uh, the watershed protection, the TMDLs, and so on and so forth, so I'd, I'd like for any, anyone, if you're possible, to be there.
Seven PM?
Yeah, on the eighth, yep, seven PM. And it'll probably, you know, be an hour and a half long, but it's, it's a very important evening. I think I'd already kinda gotten everybody's pre-admission on that, so, when we set the date, so I'm trusting that everybody will be there. And like I said, it's gonna be a very nice evening, very informative, and as to Steve's point, you'd be surprised what all the Parks Foundation does to bring Manchester, not even just in compliance with, but exceeding state mandates and, and requirements on all kinds of things. Soil preservation, save the bay, all, all kinds of, with the tree economy in the, in the town, so.
Correct.
Very important.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Doug?
Nothing here.
I don't believe I have anything either.
All right, then we'll, uh, intertation, entertain a motion to adjourn, and, uh, if everybody could stick around for a few minutes, we have a budget work session, we, we have a lot of questions still that we can at least, we're gonna touch on a few highlights. And, uh, then we'll have a more detailed budget work session on March the twenty-fifth, and next town council meeting, April ninth. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.